Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Tuesday, May 17th, 2022 Planning Commission. Y'all, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Bentley, would you please call the roll?
I will. Mr. Hardy.
Here.
Mr. Tuckfield.
Here.
Mr. Marley.
Here.
Ms. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Spatafora.
Here.
Mr. Oliver.
Here.
Mr. Bentley, all present.
Okay, sir, thank you. Everybody is present and accounted for. Item number four, approval of previous meeting minutes. Do we have any discussion or questions?
If there are none, Mr. Chair, I make a motion to approve the previous meeting minutes as presented.
Motion by Mr. Spatafora.
Support.
Supported by Mrs. Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? The motion passes. Approval of tonight's agenda. Any discussion? Any questions before we approve tonight's agenda?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
And I'll support. Motion by Mrs. Smith, seconded by Mr. Meyerly, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion passes. All right, old business. Mr. Box, do we have any old business to deal with?
Not this evening.
Okay, thank you. New business, rezoning request of agricultural AG to commercial general C2 Clinton River Crossing LLC. Permanent parcel 0814200023. Located on the southwest corner of 24 Mile Road and North Avenue. Section 14, Steve Briney petitioner. Mr. Box?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commission. This is a property, as you mentioned, on the southwest corner of 24 Mile and North Avenue. You may recall, this petitioner came before you previously, and we decided to hold off until the master plan had been updated. They are seeking to rezone from agricultural to C2 or general commercial use. The site is intended, as we understand it, to be developed as a small family-owned restaurant slash retail baked goods type facility. The properties to the north and west are still zoned AG and properties to the south and east are R1. The properties north, east, and south are existing residences and to the west, across the river, is vacant land. So the master plan does now show this as proposed commercial for future land use. The properties on all four sides are still planned for residential use. Kind of kitty corner from the intersection is also proposed as future land use as commercial, similar to this site. The requested zoning district does align with the future land use, as I mentioned, and now that it matches the master plan, departments are recommending approval for this rezoning.
Okay, thank you. Is petitioner here? Please come up and state your name and your address for the record, please, sir.
Steve Briney, 53164 Clarion Drive, McComb Township, Michigan, 48042.
Mr. Briney, did you have anything you'd like to add to Mr. Box's presentation?
No, thank you.
No? Okay, have a seat. Commissioners, questions, comments?
One question I had, is the extent of the floodplain area in this area? The description indicated that the, I believe, the wetland and the floodplain are within the creek boundaries or banks. And I just, I wondered if that was true, because I know it floods. It floods in there quite a bit. But I don't know how far east it goes.
The floodway is largely contained within the banks of the river. There is a little bit of flood zone that's currently shown entering this property, but again, that's just an estimate. You would have to have some survey work done and full engineering to understand exactly where that is.
And in one of the plans, I noticed the property is on both sides of the creek. Is that true or extends to both sides of the creek? Or does it just go to the creek?
I believe it does cross the creek just slightly.
Because this kind of indicates it just goes to it?
Yeah, on this graphic it does, but I do believe the property, as you see here, does actually extend across the creek just slightly.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Any other comments?
Mr. Briney, good evening. Just, this is not a direct issue today, but I'm just curious. Will the existing house remain or will it be demolished in favor of what perhaps you're looking to do? Or will it be renovated and built out the existing structure for what you want to do?
It will be demolished.
Okay.
I'm sorry, would you repeat that, please?
Yes, it will be removed.
Okay.
Mr. Spatafora, do you have another question?
No further questions, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Okay. This restaurant will be facing either North Avenue or 24 Mile, have you decided yet?
I haven't decided yet. I believe North Avenue is what I'm looking at.
Anyone else?
Just one quick question. Mr. Briney, what would your timeline be on this?
It's going to be a little while.
Okay. Five years?
Three to five years.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I did have one question for Mr. Box, if I can. Mr. Box, obviously, this is probably a somewhat challenging parcel to develop. Are you comfortable that we're putting a use on this parcel that's developable?
Yeah, so you're right, it will be difficult to develop. As you see, I put the aerial back on the screen behind you. There is, as I mentioned, some, in this area, some floodplain that will have to either not be built on or be addressed, where they can do some cut and fill, maybe to gain some of that back. You see a notched out piece in the corner, looks like right of way North Avenue still needs to be obtained by the county road department. So those things will kind of shrink the lot a little bit. It's 2.2 acres roughly right now. I think, given those restrictions, it's going to take it down probably more like one and a half acres or so to be developed. There are other restaurants that are on sites of that size. But certainly, you know, there are some, you know, there's no sewer here yet, so it may need a septic field, depending on if sewer's there when he goes to develop it. So yeah, there'll be some navigating that he's going to have to do to develop this property, and I think he's aware of that.
Okay. But to the original point, you do believe it's developable?
Yes.
Most likely, but challenging.
Yes.
And then, Mr. Briney, same, I know you have on file here, it looks like you have a planning consultant, probably knows the area. Have you gotten, we're looking at rezoning tonight, we're not looking at site plan issues, I'm not trying to bring those up, but have you gotten far enough along your due diligence, you're comfortable you'll be able to meet ordinances as they stand?
That's correct, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Tuckfield. Anyone else? All right.
For a restaurant, may I? For a restaurant of any size, I guess, are we requiring that there be a sanitary sewer system?
Well, currently, right now, that this property doesn't have sewer connection, so it would be a septic. There are some others in the township that do have septic. I think they would work with the county health department to determine whether they would allow it or not.
Okay.
All right, that'll be good? All right. And I'd like a motion to open it to the public.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Bentley?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Spatafora, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, anybody opposed? Motion passes.
6:40.
If you'd like to speak on tonight's Agenda A, the rezoning request for the commercial area on 24 Mile and North Avenue. You have four minutes, and you need to come up to the podium, state your name, your address. And we ask that all speakers limit their comments to, again, four minutes. Once the public portion is closed, we will not recognize any further discussion or comments from the community on this item. So please state your name and address, sir.
Glenn Gilmet, 52851 North Avenue, McComb Township. We own the property directly to the south of that property. We believe such an endeavor would impact our our living conditions. As you said, there's, that floodplain may not be quite accurate. When it floods good, it's all the way up to the back of that, the water comes all the way up to the back of that garage. And then, if you do any filling in over there, it's going to impact us as far as flooding our property out. And we would certainly require minimum of a six or eight foot concrete wall from North Avenue to the river. So as we could maintain our privacy.
Anything else?
I think that's all I got to say.
All right, thank you very much. Anyone else?
Hello, my name is Sarah Polisi. I live at 53075 North Avenue, McComb Township. I'm directly across 24 Mile Road, so you see my home in the picture. My driveway comes off of 24, and unlike Mr. Gilmet, who just commented about a fence, a brick wall or something, I would not be able to do that. So that would impede my view. This is a very agricultural residential area, and I personally believe that we don't need to have commercial property on every corner of the township, as many of our southern neighbors did for many years. And we do not have the sewer. Since I'm to the north, I would believe that I probably wouldn't be impacted by any of the improvements for the floodplain, since I'm upriver, not down. But I do agree with Mr. Gilmet, there is a lot of water that comes in that backyard, almost all the way to that garage, every spring and fall. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else?
Nancy Lang Gilmet, at 52851 North Avenue. And I'm the house right there that you see, the south of him. And I've pretty much grew up on all this land. That was part of my family's farm. And I can't see how he's going to build there, because it does flood. And if you fill that in, I don't know what the DNR is going to say, but they don't allow any kind of filling anywhere towards that river. And, oh yeah, it floods bad there. I've grown up there all my life. And I don't think we need a restaurant there. I mean, 23 Mile Road, there's restaurants, there's gas stations. Why do you need the plunk, a restaurant in the middle of a residential area? I can't see it. I just don't see where the logic is to that. And another thing, I have another question. My property is zoned residential. I want to know why that's zoned agricultural? When I live right next door to him. I mean, that doesn't make sense. Everybody around there is residential. And how he's still agricultural, that's besides me. Somebody isn't looking at something. Because that house has been there a long time. That was my parents' house that one time. And I don't know how he's still residential. That hasn't been farmland for years. But it does flood, and yeah, I do want a privacy wall. An eight-foot one, because I have a pool, and I want my privacy. That's why I live there. If I didn't want my privacy, I'd live in a subdivision. I plan on, I'm retired, and I plan on staying there until I die. And I don't think my kids are ever going to sell it. And it's just part of the family farm, and just north of there is the farmhouse to the family farm. And it floods. I don't know how you're going to do that. And I know the DNR doesn't let you change anything as far as going towards that river, as far as filling in. Because ours is kind of like a little hill from the river up. So I don't know, but I don't think we need a restaurant. In an area that's quiet, it's bad enough we have the traffic on North Avenue, that we have to wait sometimes 20 minutes to get out of our driveway. What's it going to be like if you put something like that there? He ain't going to get out of your driveway, and there's a light at 24. But they whip around 24 when the light is red at North Avenue, so what's it going to be like if you put a commercial building there? We ain't never going to get out of our driveway. So I guess we don't go anywhere. But it does flood. I don't care what he says. I've lived there all my life, and I've seen the floodwaters, and it comes up in my yard. But yeah, it's been right up to the back of that garage adjacent to the house. And I mean, the river's there, it's going to come up. When it rains, it comes up. So I don't think we really need that out in a residential area. There is no other businesses by us. It's all residential homes. So I don't know how he's still agricultural when we're all residential. Because I looked on my tax papers, and I'm residential. And I live right next door to him. How's that happen? I don't know if you can answer that or not, but I don't see how he's agricultural.
Your time is up, just so you know.
Pardon me?
Do you have anything else you'd like to share? Your time is up.
No, that's it, but I'm just saying, I don't think we need it.
Got you.
It's not a need.
Thank you so much. All right, anyone else? Anyone else? All right, well then, at this time, I'd like to close the public portion at 6:48 with a motion.
I'll support that motion.
Motion by Mrs. Smith?
I'll support.
Supported by Mr. Meyerly, that we close the public portion. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. Mr. Box?
Well, I'll try to answer a couple of those. So yes, if this is rezoned to C2, any commercial next to residential, they would be required a masonry wall, as was stated from North Avenue. It wouldn't go all the way to the river, because it wouldn't be placed in the easement. But it would go the majority of the property per ordinance that would be required. As far as how this one is zoned agriculture, I wasn't here when it was zoned that way, but I can guess that this whole area, like much of the township, was zoned agricultural at one time, and as farmsteads started to close down farming the fields and parcelling off units, those units became residential, R1. The unit to the south, which I believe is their home, I don't have a measurement on here, but to remain agriculture, it would need 200 feet of road frontage, and it doesn't look like it would have 200 feet of road frontage. I'm not sure, I'm just guessing based on looking at this aerial. That's likely why it had to go to R1, because it didn't meet the requirements for AG any longer, when they split it off to build houses.
Josh, I'm sorry, you said it would have to be 200 feet, correct?
To be considered agriculture, it's requirement of 200 feet of road frontage.
Thank you.
I also want to remind everyone that Eagle will look at this in terms of the floodplain, and that's not something under the purview of this planning commission here today. The issue is whether it should be rezoned to C2 as master planned. If this developer moves forward, he will have to get all necessary approvals from the state of Michigan regarding the floodplain, and our engineers will look and scrutinize this property due to the water in the floodplain area. So that's for another day with site plan and engineering approvals.
And that's not an easy task.
No, no, but...
There's going to be a lot of work involved.
Even if he's rezoned today C2, he has to develop the property, which is the next stage, which he has to get all those approvals. So that's not decided here today.
Okay. All right. Commissioners, comments? Mr. Spatafora?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Although Mr. Briney's intent, from what we've gathered from our materials, is that of perhaps a small family-owned restaurant, and you can clarify this, Josh. If the rezoning to C2 would permit him for any one of 30 permissible uses that are contained within the C2 zoning classification with all the subparts, let alone another 36 or 37 special land use potential approvals as well, if Mr. Briney met the requirements, is that correct? So it's not necessarily a restaurant, although that's the intent now. It could be any one of those uses that comply with C2.
His intent being what it is, if it's rezoned and he goes forward and attempts to develop it as a restaurant, and for whatever reason determines he can't fit what he needs on that property to be a restaurant, obviously, he wouldn't build a restaurant, but there are other uses permitted within C2 that he could look at developing as.
And through an exhaustive study of our updated master plan, it was the township through your office and our consultants with exhaustive research that intended and planned and thought that was that area in that corner was the best use as a future land use within the commercial C2 zoning classification, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'll make that motion to rezone the request of the AG to commercial, general C2 Clinton River Crossing LLC.
Motion by Mrs. Smith?
Support.
And supported by Mr. Oliver. Mr. Bentley? Please call the roll.
All right. Ms. Smith?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Spatafora?
Yes.
Mr. Marley?
Yes.
Mr. Bentley? Yes? I have to. Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
And Mr. Tuckfield?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, for the record, I did not list the parcel number. Do I need to do that?
Pardon me?
I didn't list the parcel number, do I need to do that?
Nah, I think we'll be okay. All right. Next item, item B.
Thank you, Board.
Thank you, Mr. Briney. Revised site plan, Miscellaneous Products Incorporated, permanent parcel 0820104004, located one-third mile south of 23 Mile Road and three-quarter miles west of Romeo Plank, section 20, William Corbett petitioner. Mr. Box?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commission. So the property in question, as you mentioned, is just south of 23 Mile Road, west of Romeo Plank. The, I'm sorry, north of 23 Mile Road, I believe this does say south, but it's north of 23, if I'm not mistaken. They are seeking to expand their facility, therefore, the revised site plan. It's already zoned for heavy industrial. You saw the footprint on the previous slide here from the aerial, you can see the footprint of the building. The area that's being expanded is kind of highlighted in blue here. They are essentially new office areas to be constructed. A lot of this facility is warehouse facility. They are meeting all of their front yard setback, even though they're reducing it, they're still meeting the requirements. They are also adding, which to my knowledge would be the first one in the township, an electric vehicle charging pedestal northwest of the building. After internal review, all of our departments, their uses have been revised in the drawings, they are in compliance. The screening that's being impacted, excuse me, screening has not been impacted. The reduced front yard setback does meet the ordinance, and the existing parking meets the updated need. So overall, recommendation is for approval at this time.
Okay, thank you. Is the petitioner in the audience? Come on up. Please state your name and address for the record for me, please.
William Corbett, 16730 Enterprise Drive. I'm joined with my civil engineer, Nathan Robinson.
We'll need your name and address too, please.
Nathan Robinson with Horizon Engineering, P.O. Box, 182158 Shelby Township, 48318.
Okay. All right, did you have anything you wanted to add? What's that?
We're south of 23 Mile Road.
Yeah, it is.
Ah, got you. So anything you guys wanted to add?
No, basically, we moved to the township back in 2011 into this facility. We've been fortunate to grow our business. And a few years ago, we ended up expanding the warehouse into the south there, where there was some planned room for building expansion. And basically, you know, we've got similar needs in the office. Interior of the office is still original to the building, so this started with a plan to renovate, but we've got some, you know, future needs to grow that square footage a little bit, which is why we're looking to basically widen the front area to the east and the west to kind of match the overall building envelope and take advantage of that square footage.
Okay. All right, commissioners?
Quick question to the petitioner, what do you manufacture there?
We do interior products for the automotive industry, industrial sewn, like textile components.
No heavy machines?
Mostly industrial sewing machines, all light duty stuff.
Thank you. Mr. Bentley?
Just some questions, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Couple of questions, we've got two additions going on, one in each end, correct? On the east, it would be the east and the west.
Correct.
Trees are coming out there. You have two units on the roof right now, air handling units. Are you adding new units, or are those sufficient to handle the existing or the new additions?
So those calculations are being worked on right now by architecture. I don't believe, from initial conversations, that those existing units are adequate. So either replacement or additional units will be required.
Okay, so right now, those two units are pretty obvious, you can see them. I would just, I was concerned about new units, where they would be placed, whether they'd be on the manufacturing building or they would be on those additions. And being now closer to the And being now closer to the corner, not having the trees there anymore, uh, they'd be a sore thumb. Uh, you might cons, I'm just saying, you might consider screening them if they're going on those office additions. But, uh, that was one concern I had, just the, the looks of what it's gonna look like. Um, and, uh, you have new storage identified on the floor plan. Um, and I wondered if there's any storage that's, uh, hazardous, storage that you're adding to the building?
No.
No adhesives and things like that that could be, uh, more flammable than what you have currently?
Nope.
Okay. And, uh, the, uh, the plan also indicates, um, and it shows stairs going to a, um, uh, a raised mezzanine or second floor in the manufacturing area. Is that currently office space?
So the, uh, for what I believe you're referring to, so, so one of the things that, um, is being entertained is basically adding, uh, adding that mezzanine. It doesn't exist right now, but adding that to, to, um, to create a training space for our employees. Um, again, we've, we've, we've kind of filled up this facility, you know, since we've been there. Um, and, uh, you know, the decision that, that, that has really been, been, um, entertained over the last, you know, year or so is try and find and move into a bigger facility, which the way the markets are is very difficult. You know, so, or, you know, continue to add on, right, and modify this. So, um, so what you're seeing there, um, is basically a proposed, you know, second story mezzanine in an area right now where, uh, we just have like lunch tables on that kind of main floor. So it's an unused, you know, space up there and we're looking to um, take advantage of some additional square footage.
Sure.
To create basically like a training area for, for our employees.
Right. And I, I see, so those are new stairs. You've got two sets there, so, uh, that to me says, okay, it could be an occupied space, whether it's for training or what have you. Uh, my question would be, uh, uh, Mr. Box is, is that area required, required to be calculated into the, uh, required parking?
I believe, uh, Melissa, when she did her review, did calculate that into the parking.
Okay. Um, is that your understanding as well when, when you check the, the parking and the, the, um, the quantities there that are identified on the plan?
That's my understanding, yes.
Okay. Alright, um, are there any other new items other than those two exterior doors that you're adding, um, besides this expansion? And the, the storage rooms in the back? Are, are you, are you adding, um, toilet facilities and such?
Yes, we are.
You are?
Yep.
Alright, now, I would imagine, uh, building department will review that as far as requirements there. Um, I was just looking for, uh, things that might affect your exterior as far as your, uh, parking and things of that nature, so. Um, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else? Okay. At this time, I'd like to have a motion, open it up to the public.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Oliver, seconded by Mr. Meyerly. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, at seven oh, I believe, three.
Four.
Seven oh four. Alright, anybody like to come up and speak? What I will do, and what I didn't do the first time, is I'll give you like a signal when you're down to about a minute. Just so you know, so we don't, I don't cut anybody off. Anybody like to speak? Okay. Then at seven oh five, we will close the public portion with a motion.
So moved.
Mr. Oliver?
Support.
And supported by Mrs. Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion passes. Alright, next item.
I think it was just closing the public portion, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, yeah, we closed the public portion. Thank you. Now we need a motion. Thank you. Got close.
I'll, I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman, to approve the site plan for permanent parcel zero eight two zero, one zero four, zero zero four. Uh, pursuant to it being, um, compatible with the zoning ordinance and all of the appropriate department heads recommending its approval.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Tuckfield?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Spatafora. Mr. Bentley, would you call the board, please?
Um, Mr. Tuckfield?
Yes.
Mr. Spatafora?
Yes.
Mr. Bentley, yes? Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Marley?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
And Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Okay. Motion passes unanimously. Next item. Special land use. Site plan. Yatuma Oil. Permanent parcel zero eight, three six, four five two, zero two two. Located on the northwest corner of Hall Road and Grashit. Section thirty-six. Michael Yatuma, petitioner. Mr. Box?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commission. Uh, this is an, an item that's been, uh, before you previously for some rezon, for a rezoning. Uh, it's also been to the zoning board, uh, once, maybe twice, actually. Uh, so s, most of you should be familiar with the property. This is located at, uh, Hall and Grashit Avenue. Very near the, the southeast corner of the township. Uh, the, the property was rezoned to C2 and they did get a few, um, variances for the property. Uh, so there's two things that we're looking at this evening. We're looking at a special land use request, which has to do with outdoor sales as well as the drive-through that they're proposing. And then we are looking at the site plan. One of the variances that they received specifically with regards to the drive-through has to do with landscaping. So the site plan and, and the special land use kind of go hand in hand, so I'd like to go through all of it first. So there's a number of items that they have, or boxes that they have to check, if you will, uh, when looking at the special land use. Uh, the display and, and storing of, of these outdoor items. Things like propane or i, ice cream, or excuse me, ice are common. Um, oftentimes in the winter, you might see some radiator fluid or, or other items out at the pump for sale. The drive-through use, uh, again, they did get a variance granted for a reduced setback from the west adjacent residences. Uh, and there are, again, several, uh, conditions on that regarding hours of operation and the landscape screening. The locations, uh, will, for outdoor sales will not impact the movement throughout the site. Uh, and the drive-through, it does not appear that the drive-through will impact the pedestrian traffic on the site. For outdoor sales, um, the sales areas are proposed with four-foot-high brick block wall to prevent further potential of any nuisances. Also for the drive-through, uh, no nuisances, nuisances relating to dust, fumes, vibrations, smoke or light to others are anticipated. Um, with regards to both of them, they're proposed, uh, neither is really anticipated to interfere with or, or discourage the use of, development of adjacent land or buildings. Uh, both uses relate harmoniously with the physical and economic aspects uh, of the commercial shopping district that is Hall, both Hall Road and, and Grashit Avenue. Uh, and they are designed with health, safety and welfare, uh, being protected for its users. At this time, our internal staff is recommending approval for the special land uses. But I do want to go through the site plan because again, one of the special land uses is related to the drive-through and had some variances related to landscaping. Uh, so the site plan itself, they, they are now meeting all the dimensional standards that are required of them, including the setbacks, uh, distance between buildings, uh, and the such. Um, the drive-through is one hundred and thirty-three feet, which is the grant, variance that was granted in November. Parking is proposed throughout the site and their needs have been met. Uh, and they also show the loading zone on their site plan as well that meets the ordinance. Vehicular access, uh, from both Hall and Grashit Avenue. Uh, as well as the eight-foot pathway provided, uh, is being provided as required along both frontages. So the landscape is what I really wanted to point out with regards to the special land use. So they do have a number of, of items that they're showing for landscaping. The twenty-four-foot tall trees were required for the northwest corner. That was a, a portion of the variance being granted, that those trees were twenty-four feet tall uh, at the time of planting. As well as eighteen feet tall or taller, uh, along the rest of the western property boundary. Uh, so that's what you're seeing there. Those are the locations that they have put those items. Um, they also have their required six-foot, uh, masonry wall shown on their plans. That is required per ordinance. Again, they have the, the trees, um, shown that are required per the variance. Um, and, and the reduced setback for the call box is shown, uh, as well as the screening that was required as part of that variance with the wood fence and a brush row around it. One thing I will say with regards to the variance, um, it, and the landscaping, the trees, the twenty-four-foot tall trees and the eighteen-foot tall trees. Uh, the variance didn't specify how many trees of each of those, so that would be under your purview. Uh, whether, you know, they, it looks like they have two twenty-four-foot trees and, uh, a handful of eighteen-foot tall trees. That is something that would be under your purview, whether you feel that's sufficient screening from the properties. Uh, the lighting also, they, they do show that the zero handle foot along the property line, which meets the ordinance. And that being said, the staff has no objections at this time.
Okay. Commissioners?
How are you?
Anything you'd like to add, sir?
Um, well, I want to thank Josh. This has been probably the fourth or fifth iteration of this plan. Very forthcoming and thorough. We want to thank you for that. Uh, thank you for having us here. Um, we're gonna, Josh did a pretty good job of presenting this, so we'll just leave it to you to ask questions from here.
Did we get names? Hmm?
No.
You didn't introduce yourselves. I'm sorry. I thought you did.
That's fine. Vito Pamplona, Pamplona Construction Management. We're the developer.
And address, please.
Uh, eight fifty West University Drive, Suite D, Rochester, Michigan, four eight three zero seven.
Okay. And this young man next to you?
Jason Fleese, uh, civil engineer with the Elmer Group.
And your address, sir?
Grab the address over here. It is, uh, four, four nine, two eight seven, West Road, Wixom, Michigan.
Okay. Thank you. I'm sorry. No, go ahead, sir.
No, that's, th, this is, what you have in front of you here is probably the fourth or fifth iteration of this plan. We've been, uh, at this for several months. I mean, it's probably been about six months now. Um, we've revised the landscape plan a couple of different times, the drive-through. What, what you see in front of you, we think is a very good, um, you know, indication of what that subject site should be developed as. Um, we were the ones who actually initiated the eighteen-foot trees for the landscape barrier and the twenty-four-foot trees to meet some of the needs of the residents, um, that are ordering our property there. Um, we've gone through, uh, all of the requirements of, uh, MDOT in regards to the entrances and stacking. We've had a traffic study completed. Um, we've, uh, done some preliminary engineering as of now, um, and that will be something that Jason can touch on as well. And, uh, we feel that this is the best use, uh, for this parcel. This was an old, uh, MDOT, um, off-ramp that came from Grashit that went south and dumped onto Hall Road. So that was basically combined and it's been sitting there for, I don't know how many years, and it basically just stacks up with weeds and political signs. So, right now, uh, what we're proposing, we've put a lot of thought into and, um, you know, a lot of work. And, and, and again, thank you, Josh, for all your work and your help as well. So, we'll leave it open for discussion from there.
Okay. Commissioners?
Question? I got two questions. Um, is there a reason why you didn't go down with twenty-four-foot trees all the way? You, you started with, you got two twenty-four-foot trees, but why didn't you continue with a twenty-four-foot tall tree?
Well, number one, um, it's basically the availability of the tree. And, and when you're looking at, um, the spacing of them as well, you gotta look at the caliber of the tree and the health of the tree. You can stack as many forty, twenty-four-foot trees next to each other that you want, but they'll probably all end up dying. Right? So, we're looking at availability and we're also looking at, um, you know, where they're located. The twenty-four-foot trees that were in the back, those came about because one of the residences there said that she was actually, her grade was higher than our parcel. So she said she was looking further into the development. So our, you know, to remedy that situation and to kind of, you know, appease that, um, we decided, we says, you know what, that's fine. We understand. We don't want to encumber your well-being, your, of your residents. Uh, we'll put the twenty-four-foot trees in there. The remainder of the eighteen-foot trees that are planted there on the, uh, west property line, um, those will be sufficient in order to block out the rest of that neighborhood there. There, there also is a masonry wall that's six-foot that goes by that as well.
We're aware of that, yep.
Yeah. That masonry wall is actually, um, a post and panel masonry wall. So, uh, you see a normal masonry wall, they usually go in, they trench cut a footing in all the way through. It's gonna kill any deciduous tree that's over there. These post and panel, uh, concrete walls here, you're basically putting a single footing in per post and then the panel slides in it. It does two things. Doesn't kill the deciduous trees. It also takes care of any runoff water that would come from the neighboring or ourselves and would hit the swell or engineering that we have there in regards to watershed.
So there's a gap?
Correct, yeah. It's about that tall. It really depends on the elevation and the topography of the area there.
Okay. In the call box, um, what have you done to try to dent that noise to them neighbors?
Okay, so if that was, uh, one of the variances that, that was requested, um, and that we got approved, that call box right now is actually screened with a cedar wood wall that, that has vegetation on it as well as additional vegetation that was required by us in the landscape plan. That, that was something that we actually had to adhere to before we could even get in front of you today for a site plan.
We seen that.
Yeah.
Alright.
So then every, every tree in the print is gonna be a tree. Cause Mr. Box indicated that there was no actual physical number. Or did I miss?
The, what the variance required was twenty-four-foot tall trees in the northwest corner, which you see up there in the two red circles. And eighteen-foot tall trees, um, along the west property boundary. It didn't, what it didn't specify is how many of each of those trees.
So you're saying every tree on that, every mark on that print that indicates a circle is gonna be a tree?
Correct.
So what do we look at, twelve trees, sir? Fifteen?
Kevin Brandon, five four zero four eight Shelby Township, Michigan, four eight three one six. Um, the architect for the project and, um, also worked on the landscape plan with the landscape architect. And, uh, to answer the question, so what we did was, obviously eighteen-foot trees are not common to plant, you know, generally speaking, you're doing eighteen-footers. So you work with those on centering spaces, uh, even with deciduous trees, you know, there's requirements. So we, we've talked to a few arborists that, that we're gonna source the trees from and again, uh, to, to figure out a good spacing. That gave us the quantity on the eighteen-footers. Um, again, same with the twenty-four-foot trees, you just can't fit a lot of them in there because they're gonna be pretty big trees. So, um, we do have a quantity and Melissa was very diligent on her accounts, so we, we, we basi, with planning, so we basically those numbers are correct to the quantities that are shown on the plan.
Okay.
So, um, and again, we have not specified the type of tree it is because, again, sourcing them out, we don't know. We may have to get these from different nurseries around the state or even in the Midwest and they'll be pine or spruce and it'll be good quality trees.
Yeah, most likely they're gonna be Norway spruce. It's probably the most disease-resistant. Um, obviously, if we're planting eighteen and twenty-four-foot trees, we want them to live. We don't wanna have to replant them. So the Norway spruce is probably the, the tree that we are going to plant there. And they're full, big, no, and no last.
I, I get what you're saying about the size of the tree. But this, that was my question. Because again, we got a lot of residents there. Some are here in the audience tonight and we wanna, we have to still protect them for, from the noise.
Oh, absolutely. I mean, that, that's how this came about.
Sure.
We, we proposed this. So we were trying to put our best foot forward in order to, you know, do that for them.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm good.
Thank you, Mr. Oliver. Anyone else?
Mr. Tuckfield?
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to make a comment on that, uh, to Mr. Oliver. Um, when we looked at this from, uh, the ZBA's perspective and Josh, one thing I wanted to make sure I was reminded of what other variances we granted because I remember it, but I don't remember it clear enough of all the other ones. But the sound perspective was not a commercial property next to a residential property. It was specifically regarding the call box. And so when we were looking at sound, we were looking And so when we were looking at sound, we were looking at, it wasn't just that this property was here, we weren't looking at the north end per se. We were looking at where the call box would affect. So, the tree suggestion, which I don't remember exactly how it happened, I don't remember it coming, I think it was maybe both sides, but regardless, it wasn't supposed to be, or it was not imagined to be required for the entire perimeter, because we weren't dealing with the entire perimeter, we were dealing with the boundaries that the call box would affect. And so, while I certainly would have liked to see trees along the whole perimeter, it didn't seem appropriate considering the request and what we were addressing. Now, I don't know that necessarily binds us here, and as Mr. Box says, I think probably be within our purview to require more trees, but from the ZBA's perspective, we weren't looking at the whole site plan, we were looking at the areas of the site plan that would be affected by sound. And so that's why it's really only that back area. And as I believe the petitioner mentioned, the resident on the north, I guess it would be the northwest corner, said she had a grade difference. And so when we were talking about it, we said, well, if the trees were there, we should probably make the tree different, because you don't want to be accident, accidentally seeing over the trees that were good enough for everybody else's elevation. So, just wanted to make sure that was mentioned. Maybe the planning commission wants to put more trees in, but from the ZBA's perspective, we were trying to stay within the lane of specifically what we were referencing. So, with that said, Mr. Box, I believe there was one or two other variances. Can you refresh my memory on, on what else we granted there? You may not remember either, but...
I am, I'm trying to refresh my own.
It was the canopy setback.
Canopy setback from, from the road.
Correct.
Yes.
Southeast corner of the canopy.
And that was, and that was the only other variance granted.
Correct.
Is that accurate? Okay. And then the last question I had, I'm not sure that I've seen a bioretention basin like this on a, on a drawing we have. Can you describe what that looks like and what that is?
So, so from McComb County standards, you still require the two inches over the entire site for your detention. What we're looking at is collecting the water off-site that's coming, coming onto our site, and then also treating the water that's coming from our site. So, what that'll do is, it's a nice linear infiltration basin. We'll have at least a foot of depth of storage within the infiltration basin. And then there'll be a previous, medium underneath, for at least eighteen inches to twenty-four inches. They depend on, we'll do, we're doing some infiltration tests on the site and some additional borings to identify where, if there, I know there's a lot of clay in McComb Township, but if we can identify any sand layers and find those, we'd like to take the sand down to that level so we can infiltrate as much stormwater, improving the quality of the runoff before it gets into the detention basin, and then providing the proper amount of volume in the detention basin, and then we're outletting to the southeast corner on Hall Road there.
So, to a, to a Navisight, this would look like a shallow ditch with, with gravel type, gravel at the bottom, grass at the bottom, what would it look like?
There'll be some, just like a perennial planting that goes in there, like a grass.
Okay.
There's, there's a lot of variations on it, but the one we're gonna propose is like a grass bottom.
Okay. And then the last question, Mr. Box, I believe the petitioner mentioned a, a post and beam, or a post and panel fencing. Did we grant a variance on that?
You did not.
Okay.
Township ordinance requires a continuous footing for a masonry wall.
Right.
If, if what's intended is a post and, and panel wall, they would need a variance for that, or they would have to do the continuous footing wall.
Okay. And I just wanted to make sure that the petitioner was aware of that.
Yeah, we weren't aware, we weren't aware of that, and that's fine. I'm glad you brought that up, yeah. We're, basically what we're doing is we're just trying to save any type of deciduous plantings that are there.
And, and that's understood, obviously, just want to make sure, and I think, yeah, I just want to make sure you're aware of that.
I appreciate that, yeah. If it's continuous footing, then that's what we will do, we'll comply.
Okay. Alright, Mr. Chairman, I think that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Tuckfield. Anyone else?
Yes.
Mr. Bentley, is that, is still the hours of operation on the call box for an effect?
Yeah, that was another limitation on the variance. I don't remember off the top of my head, I want to say it ended at seven PM. It was a...
I believe it's seven AM to eight PM. It's on the site plan.
Yeah, it's on the plan.
There you go.
There was four requirements for the, the variance and...
Okay. Alright, Mr. Bailey?
Yes. I'll, I'll pick up where Mr. Tuckfield left off on the, on the swales, or the bio retention, or the, yeah, bioretention. Are those bioswales, are they planted with plants or vegetation that take care of the oils and things that come off the, the parking lots? Or, or are you not allowing runoff from the parking areas?
The, the area of fueling and, and then, and then supplying fuel to the, the storage tanks, that area will be conveyed into a catch basin and then through a mechanical filter before it gets into the detention basin. We're not gonna provide that runoff into the infiltration swales.
So you don't have bioswales where you have vegetation that'll consume the oils and things?
Correct. That, that's, the, that's more intended for the, like, the stormwater runoff in the areas where we're not gonna have any fueling area.
Do you expect, based upon the information you have thus far, that you're gonna have runoff from the adjacent properties into that bioretention?
Yeah, currently, there's sheet flow from the west to east in those properties, and then a little bit in the northwest corner, and then along the north edge of the property, it really runs west to east along the property line. So, it's really coming more from the, the west side of the site that we'll have to deal with some off-site drainage.
So pretty much within the, within the perimeter of the property and where the fence or the wall will be placed, you're pretty much going to strip that site of, of trees? Is that correct? So, I, and the reason I say that is your explanation of using the post and panel wall versus a continuous foundation. I'm not sure what deciduous trees you'd be saving if you're taking them all out, I guess.
There are some existing trees to the west as well, on the adjacent properties, and to the north.
So you don't want to damage the roots, yet, yet you have this basin that's pretty close to that wall that would probably...
It's more of like a one-foot deep swell versus like a, you know, like a typical detention basin that you see with like digging down six feet of depth.
So you don't think those will affect the roots that would be from trees on the west side of that wall?
Right. And there's also a ten-foot maintenance buffer from, from the edge of that wall to the beginning of the infiltration basin.
Okay. So, that was one, one of my questions. We, we were told that there was a traffic study. Oh, we haven't seen the traffic study. But, my questions would be, are you allowing left turns onto
Grashit?
Onto Grashit? And, and how will that affect the stack of cars that usually is there?
So, that was one of the concerns from MDOT as well, that they wanted to identify that stacking. And specifically, Josh had provided, go to the, the traffic study. Forget the specific item, but we, we did look at that left turn lane, left turn out of Grashit, and there, and what stacking at peak times would be, and determined that there would not be an issue.
It was determined that, and is that to MDOT's satisfaction?
Yes. Yeah, and to expand a little bit on what Vito mentioned, like, we, there is some concerns from the, the neighbors about pass-through traffic, there's concerns about left turn, there's concerns about the entrance locations. So, in addition to typical site plan requirements, we went, we've, we've gone and worked with MDOT. There's also some construction coordination that we needed to do along Hall Road as well for that eight-foot sidewalk there. They're gonna be starting their project. But, so we looked at those entrance locations, the ge, the location and the geometry, that's been approved by MDOT. We, we do not have the permit yet, because we still have to work through the stormwater runoff and the sanitary crossing. But the, like, down to the striping on Hall Road, like, the dimensions that we're showing on the site plan, that's all been approved and looked at by MDOT. And they've reviewed the, the, the traffic study along with the, the models that go with the software that were provided by Fleese and Van der Brink. So, they, we've had comments and worked through those, and what you're looking at is the final product for what they requested. And, and then there's some additional in there, item number four is to address the, the pass-through traffic that was a concern as well.
I noticed that there is acceleration, de-acceleration on, on Hall Road. I did not see that on Grashit.
So, we're actually already in the right turn lane. If we were not in the right turn lane, we would have provided a right turn lane.
Okay, so what you're showing there is the curb of the right turn lane?
Yes, yep. So if you look at that, that far west lane heading southbound, that's already a dedicated right turn lane.
Yeah, I didn't see any place where it, it shows a de-acceleration, you know, from the regular road as it does in the drive to the north. So, that was my question. It just seems to be, you know, coming right from the edge of the road.
So, to, to the north there, I would believe, I would think there's one less lane, and so that, that deceleration taper that you see is, is, would be in, in the same area that the dedicated right turn lane is already at our site.
Okay. Okay.
And then if you take Google Earth and kind of work your way up and down Grashit, our, our driveway is consistent with how the other drives are, with that dedicated right turn lane.
Oh, I got it. You can see it better here. Thank you. Thanks, Aaron. Alright, thank you. I think I worked out the, the circulation enough that satisfied me. I think we're okay. The restaurant parking, is it a sit-in restaurant or just drive-through?
This will most likely be a just drive-through, like a tropical smoothie-type restaurant. And nowadays, you know, a lot of things are just basically going to drive-through, and you don't get a lot of sit-in business. So, that's kind of what we were going for there anyway. It, it's not going to be heavy traffic inside. If there is traffic inside, it would be, they, you know, pull in, get gas, go inside, pick up a sandwich or a sub, come back out to the car, get back in and leave.
Okay.
Or otherwise use the drive-through.
We identified, we identified the floor space. I want to say, we talked about like eight, six tables, but it's gonna be a small, minimal area for, for the seating.
Well, what my problem is, is I, I think what I see is a different site plan there than what we received. But, so, there was parking on the northwest side of the retail store. All that parking, yet the entrances were on the, the east, southeast side of the retail. And I didn't know what that parking was doing over there. This shows parking to the north of the retail. So, I'm not sure which iteration of site plan that is, but the one we have does not have any kind of a drive on the north side of the retail building.
Okay, this, this here, what you're looking at, is the traffic impact study that was done previous of the revisions that we did on the final site plan. So, the final site plan that Josh had given to you is different than, than this one here. This is just for the, the traffic impact study. The entrances are the exact same.
The entrances are the same.
Correct.
So, were they, were they reviewing the internal circulation on this plan to go along with their traffic study?
MDOT did not look at the, the internal, I guess, logistics of the site.
Okay.
And Fleese and Van der Brink's study did not look at the internal logistics of the site as well.
Okay, so that didn't have any bearing on their, on the results of your traffic study?
Correct. We worked through the internal logistics with, with Josh and his staff.
So, if I could, MDOT, as he indicated, typically, you know, they, when they require on their roadways, traffic studies, it's through HCM or Highway Capacity Manual standards, it's common across the state of Michigan. They're looking for the driveway locations, as well as how many trips the site is, is likely to produce. The trips produced are based on the uses on the site, not how many parking spaces or where parking is. So, the fact that this is an older site, I don't think would change what MDOT looks at as far as traffic goes.
Okay. Alright, so, as I was saying, there's, there's parking on our latest plan on the west, north, west side of the retail building. And, and I wondered...
Josh, if you can pull that up, we could probably better answer Mr. Bentley's questions.
Because I, I think what we've, what I, mine concerned about is if any of that parking was for the restaurant or for the retail, I, I was concerned about cross circulation. So, if I may. This parking lot here just serves this, it does not serve anything here?
Employees for the, the fast food and for the convenience store could all park in that northwest corner. We're thinking, the, the northwest corner would not get as much visibility for the tra, traffic, and would suggest that the staff parks in those spaces. But through, you know, the retail will have doors on both, both sides, the west and the east.
Oh, it will? Okay. It doesn't... Well, I'm not sure now.
What, what I would approach to it? All our parking for the retail is handled in the northern section. All the parking for the gas station and the drive-through are handled along Grashit. We do have a crosswalk, so anybody that parks over there can walk over to, then through the, the front of the gas station to go, if they want to go to the fast food. But again, the fast food is gonna be more of a drive-through type tenant, very limited interior. I mean, we will have a interior or, but it will be very limited.
Yeah, it just seems that there's gonna be a lot of, identified by these arrows. There's gonna be a lot of traffic between the two buildings, and I was concerned of...
It's a one, but you have to...
It's a one-way.
They're both one-ways.
Yeah.
So, and it's in large one-way, it's actually a two-way, but it's one-way.
You know what, you have to go to a microphone?
Oh, sorry.
Because we're not picking you up according to our, our guide.
I like to move a room, but yeah. So essentially, it's a one-way between the two buildings and a one-way on the west side of the drive-through. And that's, that's because we have to have a bi, a ten-foot bypass for the drive-through. So it's, technically, if no one's there, it's enlarged one, in one-way traffic. And signs will be posted to that effect, too.
Okay.
Majority of the traffic that, that comes in and out of the convenience store and the fast food actually comes and parks at the gas pumps. And so if you look at the, the striping locations for the barrier-free spaces, they're strategically located as well to be in the, in the, in front of the doors. So you can come through right at that point and kind of have this grandiose entrance, and, and, and there's not a car parked right there. You come right, you can come right through the stripings.
Correct. Right. Okay. Satisfies my questions there. And I didn't see any requirement or any comments from the fire department of requiring a drive on that north side of the retail building. Is that correct?
That's correct. They did not require that.
Okay. Okay. Is there outdoor eating in that retail building, or on the front east side of that retail building?
Do you want to deface this Grashit?
Yes.
Currently, right now, no. We don't have anything slated for outdoor eating there.
Your renderings kind of show tables and chairs.
Yeah, the one on the corner does, and that's basically just for rendering purposes. If you look at the depth of the sidewalk there, there's not enough depth there to put any type of, you know, patio furniture, what would be used as a...
I, that's part of my concern, that was one of my concerns, because you... Uh, that was one of my concerns, uh, because you'd, you'd have to walk out onto the parking area to get by it. Uh, but it also kind of indicated that, oh, it's, you know, if a bakery goes there or something like that and they're eating outside, um, then there's a, an intent maybe there and, and that's what I'm asking just for clarification.
Yeah, and, and I can answer that, Mr. Bentley. Um, again, the rendering was done prior to some changes to the site, so now I think at that time we had a larger, uh, setback. And, and for the retail, maybe it was ten, eleven, twelve feet. Now it's, it's a typical seven, so we don't have room on it, but we didn't change the rendering.
We're providing a seven-foot sidewalk with some, uh, with a landscaping strip in between that seven-foot sidewalk in the building.
Right, right. And, and tables and chairs would take up that seven foot pretty much, wouldn't it?
Yeah, they would.
It would be a lot.
Okay, so that's a no then, right? Um, no, uh, no eating on the outside there.
Correct.
Fine. Uh, thank you. Sorry.
Oh, you're fine. No.
There's notes on the elevations talking about screening of the mechanical, uh, equipment. Uh, that equipment, um, and, and I don't have a section of that building and that's for the building department, I guess, but, uh, for views, it does say that it'll be entirely screened by the height of the building, yet there is a detail there for a screen wall, uh, for the equipment, which is another four to five feet, uh, above the, above the roof. Um, my question is, where is that equipment? Is it, you know, in the middle of the, uh, the, the high roof areas to where it won't be seen or, um, you know, just where, where is it being, uh, screened?
Yeah, for the retail building, obviously being a speculative building, we'll most likely put all the re- the, the mechanical HVAC units, uh, in the middle of the building. Um, they're generally smaller, these are smaller spaces, so they won't be large rooftops, um, and they will be screened. Um, probably with the size of the parapet, we will have to do the screening detail that's on the plan on A two-hundred, which would be a metal, metal, um, uh, wall. Um, with the gas station, C-store and drive-through, there is potential to, we do have a, um, a roof pitch, uh, as part of the elevation. We may be able to put those behind those, but we'll probably have to screen some of it. So that's why the details there, we'll probably have larger units for the, for the gas station, uh, convenience store, so we'll probably have to do screening, but again, it, we might be able to use part of the structure for that. So it's kind of open right now. We're kind of currently doing the HVAC plans and we, we, I think we have twenty tons of, uh, heating and cooling, so two ten-ton units. They're about four or five feet high. So they will be seen, but again, we, I can't stick them in the bill, in the middle. We have to kind of spread them out a little bit, so they will be off to the side a little bit. So we will have the necessary screening that's required.
Right.
Sir, why don't you, uh, take a seat?
Oh, thank you.
Okay.
Um, okay, um... Uh, is there, uh, I believe there's a requirement and maybe, maybe you've met it, uh, for the, uh, rear wall, some of these elevations aren't broken up, broken up in, uh, in elevation or material, um, like on, on the backside, the west side. Um, and, uh, I think our, our zoning ordinance, uh, kind of restricts some of that. Uh, I like what, what's been done on the east side. Um, it's broken up, but, um, on some of your other elevations, it really doesn't break it up.
Well, and Mr. Bentley, I can answer that. Yes, we are, what we've got is a three-brick pallet. So we have two black bricks, but they're different, um, materi- different, um, uh, style. And we have, so we have, what you see here is going to be the, uh, the east side, so the, the Grashit side, and we have a black brick base, black columns, brick columns, or pilasters, and then interior of a white brick that we've picked. And that will turn the corner. All four sides will have this material. So on the backside, if you look at...
It looked like it wasn't broken up on that backside.
Yeah, and I can kind of see it here with this rendering. This is the retail building, but you can also, this is again, the east side of the gas station, so, convenience store. This is the rear where the drive-through will be. Again, the white brick, black, uh, pilasters with the black base. So we've carried it around the whole building. And we have a cor- uh, uh, a cornice that's step cornice through the whole, the whole rear, the whole front, the whole side.
Okay.
That matches.
And I, I would assume, I'm, I'll leave that to the building department, but that's one of the areas that, uh, I, I don't know if it's all, if that is sufficient, but, um, that was one of my concerns, um, since we've, we've run into that before. Um, I thought I saw something that had stone veneer, but, uh, maybe I missed...
That's, that's on the retail building. Um, we've changed up the materials a little bit on that.
Yeah, you got mostly brick?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
And again, we also have a, if, at the four-foot height between the black base brick and the white brick, we have a cast stone sill, so, so we have a stone sill going around the whole building.
Right, right. Um, the only other, uh, question I had, I, and I appreciate your answers, um, uh, was, uh, the lighting on the canopy over the pumps. Um, and looking at the lighting fixtures on the buildings and everything, um, uh, I think we're, we're covered as far as not shining, uh, into the neighbors', uh, uh, eyes or whatever, except that the canopy has no shields on it. It's, um, are the, on the lighting fixtures themselves, they are slightly recessed, but even from the photographs, uh, of similar canopies, I'm sure, um, we're seeing, uh, light that would be, uh, that, that the neighbors would be looking at and was, I'm, I'm wondering if you would consider, uh, adding, uh, shields on the west, north sides of those fixtures, you know, three to four inch high, um, shields that would block, uh, block the light from the neighbors.
And you're talking about the canopy, the ga- the canopy?
Uh, yes.
So with the canopy light fixtures that we've specified are fully recessed, um, as far as how shields that we could put on that, those northwest fixtures, um, we can check with the manufacturer, um, to see if they provide those. Um, but I don't know...
I would think it could be just a, a sheet metal. Uh, it's recessed, you know, an inch or two inch at the most, but in the elevations, it shows that you can see that, you can see that surface and it's not like a parabolic lens like these. Uh, that light from the LED is, is able to, you know, it, it's taking a straight shot at, at whatever neighbors can see that light. So all I'm asking is, uh, can, uh, a shield be placed at the perimeter? Probably, I don't know if it's, uh, three or four inches. I didn't calculate it, but, uh, um, but did a quick, uh, perspective and, and it would appear that those could be blocked very easily without affecting your, your lighting calculations. Um, and it...
Lighting calculations as they are right now are conforming and they meet, you know, all the ordinances that, and Josh's requirements.
That's, that's for, uh, foot candles?
We can look into that.
Okay, that's not for, that's not for lighting glare?
I know, what we're saying is we can look into that. Um, we've never put any type of shielding on recessed LED lights in a canopy, so that's something that would be new to us and that's a question that's the first time I've heard it. So I don't want to give you like an answer and then not be able to...
Yeah.
Perform that answer. So that's something that we can look into and we can kind of work with the building department when we're going through our architectural drawings.
Okay, I, yeah, I just see it as being close to residential as maybe a difference. Um, and there's no trees planted along that property line, uh, that will block that from the adjacent, uh, homes. Uh, and that is one source of light that hasn't been accounted for. Uh, the only other light was at the drive-through call box. Uh, there doesn't appear to be any light shown on your lighting plan. Um, so I'm not sure if it's an internal on the box itself that they, or, or for the, uh, the back panel that might have a menu or what have you. Um, and that very well could be shielded, um, but...
The call box is like a digital call box and once the hours of operation for the drive-through are done, that's turned off, right? So if it's at eight o'clock, that thing is turned off, they're already closed down. There's no lighting back there outside of the required lighting, like the, uh, wall packs for code.
Okay.
We're also, we're also have the, the cedar, um, I, I can't remember how...
On two sides.
Yeah, on two sides, so you won't even see it anyway. The, and, and also we have some abrevi- abrevities, uh, planted beyond that as well.
And your signage, uh, behind that call box is not higher than that six foot?
No, it won't be.
Okay. So that's, that's all I had. The concerns were there because of, uh, no trees on that, uh, west, um, property line adjacent to those homes, so. That's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, I did just have one clarification I'd like to make. Uh, I believe someone said that the doors, there was doors on the northwest rear elevation. Um, I think it was somewhat indicated that they make the entry doors, they kind of look like service doors. I just wanted to confirm, are those entrance or, or service doors?
No, they're service doors, yeah.
Okay, so, so employees would be inspected to go through in and out of those and they might park in the rear building, but any, any, um, customer, potential customers would be coming through the doors, uh, facing Grashit. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. So do you have that many employees that would use that northwest parking lot?
I think it'd be one per unit, right?
Yeah. So there's a lot of parking spaces that people have to walk around the building to get into.
Potentially, yes.
All right, anyone else? Mr. Spatafora?
Um, yes, first of all, good evening, gentlemen. Um, in the purchase agreement that was given to us, you know, presenting the materials, it was signed, but there was no date. And I guess my first question is, uh, is the PA still under contract or have you bought the property, uh, successful with the close on it?
We, we purchased the property and closed on it already.
Okay, so that's all taken care of?
Yes, sir.
And during your due diligence period on purchasing, was there any environmental studies on like a phase one?
Yes, we had, we had a phase one done, yes.
Okay, and maybe this dates back a while, you know, before previous times it came before the planning commission, the zoning board of appeals and whatnot, so. And the phase one environmental, uh, results, uh, proved to be satisfactory to you as the purchaser?
Yes.
Okay, was there any other environmental studies done after a phase one?
No, after the phase one, there wasn't any needed. So when we, when we originally started before we went into developing the site plan, um, the environmental was there. So when, once that environmental was done, that kind of gave us the indication that no denture or phase two and we weren't looking at any type of brownfield or anything that was existing previous to us.
Okay. And to the best of your knowledge and recollection, there was nothing previous when it was before, like the entrance ramp, the old entrance ramp?
Correct.
Onto, uh, I ninety-four?
Correct.
Okay. You would, concerning the gas station component of your development, and maybe the three of you can educate me a little bit more on this, is the underground storage tank for the fuel, that will be brand-new and that will be installed, correct?
Yes, sir.
Is it directly underneath the pumps and the canopy or is it off?
It's off to the right-hand side there.
To the right-hand side?
So you're gonna have...
Would that be to the east then?
Yeah, you're gonna have, um, right now, we're kind of working through that with engineering to get the correct placement, because we're obviously going to have underground detention there. And we, we need to make sure that, um, you know, wherever we put it is best use and we're not adding extra utilities in regards to cost to get those sweeps up into, um, the actual convenience store. So that's something right now that we're kind of working through, um, and, and that will be basically, uh, decided with engineering. So the site plan today will be, approve the site plan and then we move forward to engineering and then engineering comes in and they kind of dictate where that's going to go.
Okay. But you said you thought, uh, at least preliminary thought would be to the east underground from those pumps?
Yeah, I mean, Jason will probably give you a better idea of exact locations, um, but that's kind of where we're at.
I, my overlying concern, it's going to be further away from the existing residents that are to the west.
Yes.
More than likely.
Yes.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, so you, you have to remember this too, is that we're, we're not going to put, um, refueling underground tanks, um, on the west side of the site there, because you have a one-way that comes off of the drive-through. So that would be the worst location that you could possibly put them, right? So to the right would be best-case scenario that, you know, that's, that's basically the best spot to put them anyway.
Okay, to the right, right at the extreme southeast corner?
Correct.
Of your, uh, perimeter?
Correct.
Okay. Because to the west, you have a retention basin, then you're going to have the screening with your trees?
Correct.
And the wall.
Correct.
Yeah, what, what's the distance on it too? It's kind of deceiving. The, um... Hold on a second.
Yeah, so there's like thirty-five, if you look at the distances there, um, from the canopy to the curbs, yeah. There, there's, there's, there's a considerable amount of space there. You got about thirty-nine or thirty-seven feet there to the, to the canopy. You get the other side of it's about thirty-five feet. Um, that is going to be, you know, best-case scenario, it's about seventy feet from the setback. So that area there, um, will be, um, ultimately probably where those tanks end up. And that's the furthest away from the residence. It's also the furthest away from the retention. Um, it's also where any wa- any runoff that anybody's concerned about in regards to oil will be mechanically treated. Um, so that area there, it will all be confined in that space there.
And the plan shows three retention basins, uh, for the development?
Yeah, there's, uh, one on north end there, one on the west end and then, um, one on the southwest end.
The southwest end being the biggest one there?
Correct, yeah.
And, uh...
Jason, to the north border and the, the west border is more of an infiltration for...
That's the infiltration, right.
And the, the detention, retention is in the southwest corner in that triangle that...
And when it's engineered, what, how many, uh, the standing water in that retention, you anticipate to be how deep approximately?
I anticipate a dry basin.
Oh, it's, it will be a dry?
We're gonna treat, treat it mechanically or through the infiltration prior to getting to that.
So it will not necessarily retain water permanently, but it will detain it for a short time and flow out?
Correct. There'll be an outlet rate and it'll flow out to the southeast into Hall Road.
Okay.
Due by township engineering as well as...
Correct. I mean, this is how I, being in the business myself, once upon a time distinguished retention from detention. The acronym R-I-D-O, retention in, detention out. So, okay. That's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spatafora. Anyone else? Anyone? Anyone? Mr. Box, did you have anything else you'd like to share?
Not at this time.
Okay. Well, then at this time, I'd like to open it to the public and I need a motion to do that.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Mr. Tuckfield?
Second.
Seconded and by Mr. Spatafora. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and now we'll make that seven, what is it, fifty?
Eight, nine.
Nope, seven fifty-eight.
Seven fifty-eight, okay. Just a reminder, you got four minutes and I'll do the one-minute kind of thing and please come up, state your name and address for the record and we will take all the concerns at the end and Mr. Box and the, and the planning commissioners will, and the, the petitioners will address them. Go ahead.
John Parkinson, two four two six one Darwin Street. Um, Mr. Box, can you please put up the, uh, the area that shows the residence behind the home, behind the, the proposed location? Thank you. Um, we have the largest parcel there. You see that cement up there to your upper right where it kind of looks like a Y? That's, that, do you guys see that? That's my home. That's, that's my family's home. We have a two-story home. So I first want to say, thank you for being here and thank you for all your diligence, especially you, sir, and, uh, the gentleman sitting next to Ms. Smith. Ms. Smith, it's good to see you're involved in a township again. Um, we understand money talks. We also understand that quality of life needs to be maintained. You know, I understand that you have to send out these public notices to these meetings, but I'd really like to know what happened to, and this, I just, bear with me. What happened to mine for December second, when you guys set that variance request? You know, I didn't get this meeting, I didn't get this notice. Did it get lost in the mail? Either way, I found out from my neighbors that you guys had the meeting, and that you guys approved the request. Nonetheless... Because you know I surely would have been here on December second to fight that. Not that it mattered because you approved it anyway, probably unanimously. What's the point of a three-hundred-foot setback if you just allow it to be moved at the simple request by those who don't even reside in the township? By the way, U-Tuma Oil, my home is for sale if you want to buy it. Um, we understand the majority of you don't really care about us, it's obvious. You haven't yet to take in considerations to what we have said in opposition of the requested rezoning and the variance. I'd like to remind you all that we are all your current taxpayers. We, my neighbors here, myself, my wife, and my other neighbors, we are your current taxpayers. We understand the tax revenue would be great for the township if this gets approved. However, allowing this request would cause a decrease in quality of life, as, as this site would cause many nuisance issues such as rats, and you can't tell me they won't come, because the garbage dumpster you guys didn't discuss is also in the back on the west portion of the house. That is really right in my backyard. Um, increased noise from the vehicles, for sure. Light pollution, sir, I'd like to thank you for suggesting the shades, the, uh, however you're gonna put that, uh, up. Um, the smell of off-gases from the fuel, from the fuel vents, because they have to have fuel vents, and the, and the pumps. My wife and I are sick to our stomachs that the township would even consider this and not listen to us.
You have one minute.
If you approve this, we are gonna request an eight-foot wall, not, please, gentlemen, an eight-foot wall, not a six-foot wall. I have a second story. My bath, master bedroom window butts up to that property, as does my bathroom window. We, the residents, immediately impacted by the proposed special land use and site plan, oppose such a plan, and would humbly and respectfully ask you to deny this request. Again, the seven AM call box, we don't even wake up at seven AM, but we know it's gonna be a problem. And we know you, most of you don't care, you're gonna vote, you're gonna vote yes, because it's in your, it's in the township's best interest to receive the tax revenue. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, my name's Philip Ziole, I live at two four two oh four Darwin. I'd like to bring you a picture, if I may?
Sure.
I took that... Okay, I took that picture at about four o'clock this afternoon. Now, you're telling me that they are going to tear down all those trees, put up a six-foot wall, and plant a couple of, twelve, eighteen-foot tall trees to take the place of all those trees? And where are the trees on the west wall? I didn't see any. Those people have already been here, and says with the elevation of their property, they'll be able to see right over a six-foot wall, and there are no trees planted on the west wall. If you're gonna cut down all those trees, why can't we have a double row of trees? So, we won't be able to see through them until they grow, grow completely. I mean, just look at that, you're gonna cut down all that and put up twelve eighteen-foot tall trees, and that's supposed to mitigate the noise, the smell, and the light pollution that those natural trees block out? So, explain that to me. Like I said, I want to know where are the trees on the west wall, and why can't we have more on the north wall? Double them up, because you sure aren't gonna replace all that with twelve trees.
Thank you.
Oh, and the center hall back there is a group hall.
My name's David Harnes, I live at two four two four oh Darwin. Uh, I would like you both, all of yous, to think about what you're doing, this is gonna affect the quality of our life. I mean, my backyard is gonna butt up to where these gas pumps are, and I don't know how you can guarantee me, when I stand on my deck, I can't see light. I mean, and as far as the noise, I mean, if it's gonna be twenty-four hours, I mean, what kind of life are we gonna have? I mean, think about it, would you guys like to come stay at my house for a week or two? All I hear about is, we're looking into it, we're gonna, we're gonna look into that. I ha, I haven't heard no guarantees of, of anything, how this is gonna affect us. And, I mean, I understand they want to build there, but how many gas stations do you need on one intersection? I mean, they just tore one down kitty-corner over there that sat there empty for about three years. You have the seven eleven on the other corner, you have a BP on the other corner, I mean, do you understand that there's a high school down the street on Fairchild, and a junior high, middle school? Do you know what traffic's like during the day trying to get out on Fairchild? Onto Hall Road, let alone opening up this, uh, exit, to exit out on the Hall Road, I mean, I have a hard time getting out on Hall Road now. I don't know if they plan on putting a light there, or what they plan on doing, but traffic is gonna be terrible. So, and the other guys have pretty much said what else I'm thinking, I mean, like I said, but I really hope you guys think about this, because there's no way it's not gonna affect the quality of our life, I mean, and I've lived there over twenty years, so, thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, okay.
Thank you for hearing my concerns. Um, before I get started, would it be possible for me to read, uh...
I need, I need your name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry, Norma Markwood, four five three two five Abington Circle. Um, our neighbor Carol and Walt Sutherland have been very active in coming, and they both have COVID at this time. So, she prepared a letter for me to read, can I read hers and then read mine too?
Well, you can give it to her attorney, and then it'll go in the record from there.
You want it?
Yeah, might as well.
Yes, please, please read that, please.
Okay. All right, go ahead, ma'am.
Okay, good evening. Um, my husband, Tim, and I have lived on Abington for fifty-three years. We're lot number three, which is right next door to Walt and Carol, who's gonna have the twenty-three-foot-tall spruce trees. But our three homes, lot three, two, and one, have nothing but the wall. And first of all, after you read that letter, we agree with Carol Sutherland and her statements. Although the plans have come a long way with corrections and beautifications, we as neighbors believe this is still not a good idea. If this goes through, this will be gas station number ten within a one-to-two-mile radius of our subdivision. Three of these are just minutes away. Two thousand and twenty-five electric cars are gonna be in, so why are we putting another gas station up? Instead of a big, beautiful backyard, we'll have a six-foot cement wall to look at the back of an eight-thousand-square-foot building with crowds, noisy complex, no trees, and that'll be that into the night. Plus, traffic is absurd, obviously, obviously going to get worse. We have a daily dose of Monday through Friday, school kids cutting through from Fairchild, from Lance Crew North, through Abington Circle, and going out onto Grashit. And I have all this on my phone, if you would like to look at it. As a matter of fact, last week, we had traffic division out on the corner, because it was so bad, they knocked down one of the signs, and I guess somebody did get cited, and then the policeman came to sit for the afternoon crew to come through, and of course, they never came through. But I do have it on film where four people came into our sub, within the three houses, turned around and went back on into Grashit, and that's very, very common. It's always been that way, even when it was a two-lane, you know, Hall Road, one way, other way. So, um, I think it would be comfortable if we could have another traffic study, because that traffic study that they did was in the beginning of two thousand and twenty-one, when the pandemic was really bad. And then school went back in session, I believe, I'm gonna slide, maybe in September of two thousand and twenty-one, and then the traffic really started coming up again. So, I guess that's all I have to say, our home is our kiosso, we love it, we love the township that we live in. I appreciate your support, and please, just try to be with us, and thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? Anyone else? All right, at this time, I'd like to get a motion to close the public portion.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Meyerly at eight twelve?
Support.
Supported by Mrs. Smith, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Okay. Mr. Box, would you like to address some of the residents' concerns?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, I guess the first question that I wrote down was with regards to, or question or concern was with regards to trees, so, I guess it depends on what, what side you're calling the north, and which side you're calling the west, but this would, would be the thirteen trees that are eighteen feet tall. Um, that, like, to me, that's the west side of the property. The north side, there are trees here, there are four of them. Looking at their site plan, they're planted at, they're proposing to be planted at six feet in height. I don't know how tall this specific type of tree will get, maybe the petitioner can answer that. Uh, and then there are the two twenty-four-foot-tall trees, as required, uh, for the variance, uh, in the northwest corner. Uh, with regards to the question about a, is there, are they gonna install a traffic light at Fairchild? This is an M dot roadway, that, that's their purview, not ours, so, I can't answer that, whether they would install a traffic signal there or not. Um, similar to the traffic study comment, um, yes, it was done in two thousand and twenty-one. I know, we don't typically, we don't own the road, so we don't typically require traffic studies. We did have one, however, done on a project in the township in two thousand and twenty, and they were required to use some, uh, growth estimates, because at the time, it was known that traffic was down due, due to the pandemic. Um, I'm assuming, and again, I don't know for a fact, because we are not the ones that required this traffic study, but I'm assuming M dot is still, uh, requiring some of those growth rates to be used with the assumption that traffic will return to pre-pandemic levels at some point. Uh, and then, lastly, uh, the, the lady, um, Norma, mentioned Carol and Walt Sutherland being active. They have been in, and talked with me on three or four occasions in the past few weeks. Uh, and they do live up here in the northeast area where these two, twenty-four-foot trees are. They are aware that those trees are there, uh, and the concerns that they have primarily expressed to me is that they don't feel that two trees is enough in their area, so I just wanted to make sure that was clear. Uh, I assumed that they would be here tonight, obviously, that they have something else going on, they couldn't be here. Uh, but that was the, and, and it sounds like you got a letter to read as well, but that's what they had expressed to me, that they felt that two twenty-four-foot trees was not sufficient to screen their property.
Okay. Commissioners, anything you'd like to add?
Mr. Chairman, just, uh, I think I've got three things, I just want to follow up with Mr. Box. Um, first thing, um, I believe one of the residents mentioned an eight-foot wall. To your knowledge, do we have an eight-foot masonry wall around any properties, commercial properties in the township?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay, just checking. Um, second item, uh, he also mentioned the notice for his ZBA meeting. Um, if you could, can you check after the meeting and, and make sure our mailing list is properly sent out? Obviously, if it wasn't, not much we can do about it at this point, but, um, if we can look into it, obviously, it's good to have our noticing.
Yep.
Um, last thing is, we do have an, uh, email here from Carol Sutherland, and, and first, I'd just like to, uh, don't overstate it, condolences, sounds a little grim, um, but certainly, I've had COVID, it's not fun, so, my sympathies to her, I hope she gets better quickly. Um, it's no fun, not at all. Um, I did read through her email, and there was one comment on here, um, Mr. Box to you, and maybe to the petitioner, that I hadn't thought of, which considering I use drive-throughs and, uh, mobile order quite a bit, it's maybe a shame, but she mentioned, um, spots for the, uh, drive-through designated spot. Are you guys expecting, the petitioner, I guess, are you expecting a specific place for overflow or, typically with drive-throughs right now, there's either mobile spots, or there's a pull-over here, so we can finish up with your order? Do you have an expected, uh, location for that to avoid stacking?
I think we, we'd look at placing them on the west, or, excuse me, the east side of, uh, the convenience store.
I can't hear you, you need to be a little louder for me.
Apologize, uh, we'd look at placing them i- in the east side of the convenience store, or potentially like one or two of the spaces in front, uh, but I think, uh, logistically, it'd make more sense to have them at the east side. Might be a little bit of, uh, steps for the, the staff at the fast food, but...
I don't know that we have any requirements for it, so, sans requirements, I'm, I'm certainly not saying this, uh, in that light, um, but I would just recommend be, having, having used a good number of fast-food drive-throughs, I would certainly recommend for the flow to have a designated area. The east side might be rather awkward, considering they're going from east to west, so they would have to circle around the entire building, uh, if they were in the drive-through. Uh, but I would certainly recommend that you consider that as part of your site layout. Um, and that was all I had, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Tuckfield. Mr. Bentley?
Um, a couple of questions, uh, as it relates to the trees first. Um, the trees, when you plant them, and they're that large, uh, twenty-four or eighteen-foot, um, do they retain the bottom limbs so that when this is planted, the limbs go at least below the six-foot, uh, height from, from the grade? In other words, they're not trimmed up?
No, they're...
So, so that it's higher than six-foot, or, or, or maybe it's eight-foot, where there's no limbs?
No, it, it, when you look at a six-foot pine tree, Norway spruce pine tree, right? If it comes in and it's six feet tall, it's six feet tall, it's cone-shaped to the bottom, spreads out, right? So, the, the sides of the tree are a foot off the ground, okay? Goes up to ten feet, and you'll see, those are eighteen feet, twenty-four feet. For perspective, the houses behind you, um, those houses are probably, uh, eight-foot to nine-foot floor heights, right? So, you're, if it's at an eight-foot floor height, and it's a two-story home, that's sixteen feet, and the windows, if you're looking out of them, the tops of those trees are gonna be at sightline. So, those trees grow three feet a year, so that's gonna completely block that out. I mean, that, that's something that you really have to take into consideration, is that these are very, very large trees. And then, when they're that big and they're that mature, they grow very fast. So, they're gonna fill out that entire area, and they're gonna probably be taller than the, the houses that are there within the first two, three years. So, I mean, that's some, you really gotta take into consideration.
Um, well, that was, that was my, uh, question, uh, and I guess if, if, if I were to guess, and I don't, I, I have a two-story house, um, an old one at that, but, uh, I would say my, my head, head heights of the upper windows are probably at, uh, eighteen-foot above grade. And these match that, but that's the smallest portion of those trees. Um, you would still see the, the buildings over them, but, uh, that's its starting point, right?
Correct.
And you've already indicated that they can only be certain amount center-to-center?
Correct.
Uh, because you've got the spread?
Correct.
And for a twenty-four-foot tree, I don't know if you know what the spread is at the base? What that might be?
Well, if you, I, I also want to mention too, if you look at the stacking of the trees, and you look at, uh, where they start, so, right under where it says eighteen-foot trees, if you look at them, they're staggered trees. So, those trees are actually staggered, and then as you go north, they, they get spaced out. That, that row of staggered pine trees is like a pine wall, okay? And then you have to realize too, that there's also a ten-foot maintenance easement there, and the six-foot wall. Um, so, there is a lot of land... So, there is a lot of landscaping here blocking the residential. I, I would, I'd also like to note that that subdivision was developed a long time ago, before we got here. There was an M dot off-ramp there from Grashit. There's always been traffic there. So, we can't control the traffic that's in that area, it's Hall Road, right? Sixty thousand cars a day. I completely understand where they're coming from in regards to noise and such. But there's also a ton of noise coming off of Hall Road and from Grashit. And for, you know, anybody to delineate between noise from a car in a parking lot that's turned on and driving, from a car that's on Hall Road driving by, it's literally impossible to figure out where that noise is coming from. You know, there's a lot of comments here about, you know, rats and things of that nature, and crowds, and, you know, we don't, we don't control who goes in and who goes out of the gas station. Majority of people are people like you and I, who go into a gas station, we get gas and we leave, right? We pump up, we go inside, grab a water, pop whatever it is, and we take off. These aren't destination spots. These are spots where people are coming home to and from work, they're going down Grashit or Hall Road, they stop in, they get gas, they leave. It's not as if people are coming from all over the area just to go to that spot, right? And then park there, and then create a huge traffic jam. It's not like we're building like a Bass Pro Shop, where people come from, you know, all over the state, they go there, they park, and then there's parking, you know, and cars stacked up all the way down Grashit. That's not the case here. It's the same as any other gas station. These aren't destinations, they're places where people stop off, you know, after work. And I'd also like to note that we do meet the landscaping requirement, you know, for this development. If you go through everything that's been required of us to meet, in regards to the rezoning, the variances, and this site plan, we've spent a ton of time going through this, and we've spent a lot of time meeting those requirements. And, you know, and it has been to our detriment. We've lost square footage in the retail, in which we have shortened that building and taken that down in order to meet parking requirements. That, we've also, you know, met the forty foot setback to the north, that shortened our building as well. So, the original plan that we had brought in was much bigger, the square footage was much more than what you're seeing here right now. And I would argue too, that, you know, this is set up for commercial. There's really no other development that you're gonna put in here. You're not gonna put a subdivision in here, right? So, whether or not this gets developed or not now, or in the future, it's always going to be some type of commercial development. So, that's best use for it, it's best use for the community, and for, you know, tax purposes, and, and, you know, the township at large. I just think that if, you know, they give us a little latitude on, you know, what we're trying to do here, and we're not trying to come in and put just a stinky gas station in here. This is a very, very nice development, it's very expensive, Mr. Utum is spending a lot of money on this. It's going to be a very high-class development with high-class tenants. And this place is not going to be shut down in, you know, six months from now. This would be a very functional, you know, very useful for the community development, and it'll look very, very nice. So, I mean, I hope I, you know, answered some of the questions, or some of the concerns that they have, and then that you have.
Okay. Mr. Bentley, did you have anything else?
The only, the only other suggestion I would make is, again, because of the lighting, and that is one of the requirements for, for site plan approval, but is for other nuisances, and the one being the lighting. And, and you have no, really no shield, or no, no buffer, except a six foot wall, for that high canopy. And where the lights are, they're probably higher than they are on the building, I would imagine. And I'm wondering if there's consideration for either trees along that west property line, or along the drive, between the retention and the drive going out, something that can block that lighting, or shields on the lights themselves. As, as a way to stop the transfer of light from that canopy. And I think all the other things have been identified. Rats, you can't control that if you were in the, in the middle of a field with nothing else around. They will find what they will find. And I would imagine they're in that neighborhood as well, so. It's all I've got.
Okay. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, just a question, we've got a special land use and a site plan here, should these be addressed separately or as one? Mr.?
That's my next question. Do you have two motions?
They should, they should be two motions, there are two separate items, there's a special land use and a site plan.
Okay.
I'm ready to make a motion when you open the floor, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, floor is open, Mr. Tuckfield, go ahead.
Okay, I would also like to mention, before I make the motion, one, two sentences. I've been on the planning commission and ZBA for somewhere in the neighborhood of combined fifteen years now. And relative to the size of the development, I don't know that I have seen this much work put into protecting the neighbors in any development I've seen. So, this is not to say that it satisfies the residents, but I would say, in context of what I've seen, I have not seen someone work harder on the small of the development. So, just wanna put that out there. That being said, should we do special land use or site plan first?
I would think special land use should be first.
Okay.
Agreed.
So, with that being said, I would make a motion to approve the special land use for permanent parcel zero eight three six four five two zero two two, pursuant to the applicable recommendations, and based upon the fact that they maintained and matched all of the appropriate criteria.
I'll support that. Mr. Bentley, call the roll, please.
Okay, Mr. Tuckfield?
Yes.
Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Spatafor?
Yes.
Mr. Bentley?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Marley?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. All right, then the next one is the site plan. Anyone would like to make that motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to approve the site plan for permanent parcel zero eight three six four five two zero two two, based on the fact that it meets and surpasses all needed ordinances, and based on the approval, on recommendations of approval by the appropriate department heads.
Okay, I'll support that too. Go ahead, Mr. Bentley, with the roll.
Mr. Tuckfield?
Yes.
Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Spatafor?
Yes.
Mr. Marley?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Bentley? Yes. Mr. Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes, all right. Next item.
Thank you very much for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you for that comment, Mr. Tuckfield?
Thank you.
There's maple trees.
Next item on the agenda is public comments on non-agenda items. Like always, you got four minutes, and.
All right, name's John Parks, you already have my address.
Yep, we do.
I would like to ask you, under what legal authority do you have to collect taxes from my property? That's gonna be the next question, 'cause now, as someone said about working harder, I'm gonna work harder to find a way to not pay township taxes. And believe it or not, there is a way for me not to pay township taxes. It goes back to common law. And when I find out how to do that, every one of my neighbors is gonna know how to do that. Just so you know, we're coming after the taxes, okay? We're coming after the bonds. You guys are done. All you voted seven to nothing. You didn't take anything we said into consideration, nothing. You, sir, did with the lighting, and I appreciate that. But nothing else. Yeah, rats, rats been around, I don't have any rats in my yard right now, none. You know what I have in my yard? I have deer, I have squirrel, I have groundhogs. I don't have rats. Mice, field mice, have those, but I don't have rats. But I can guarantee, when you put that dumpster back there, and food, and grease pits, we're going to have rats, okay? So, I will be asking for thirteen years of taxes to be refunded to my family. And I'm not joking, I'm not joking one bit. There is a way, and I'm gonna find it. God bless, peace.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, okay. The next item on the list is commissioner comments.
Oh, we gotta close it, right?
Oh, no, no, this one is open.
Oh.
Commissioner comments, anyone? Ms. Smith? Did you get some sort of an award not too long ago? Would you like to share with us?
Thank you, I did not get an award. I was nominated for the Athena Award, with twelve other wonderful candidates, and it was a wonderful, he threw me on that, that whole, okay. Thank you very much, it was, it was a nice, wonderful honor, and I was, it was touching, and it was overwhelming for me, but I appreciate that.
It's nice to be nominated and recognized.
It was, it was very, very nice.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Tuckfield?
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to give a shout out to the supervisor, Mr. Box, they invited us to the State of Township address last week. I know a couple of us were able to make it out there. And it was interesting, Mr. Viviano's speech highlighted the fact that Macomb Township meetings have gotten boring, which is a measure of success. I'm not sure if that means we're succeeding tonight or not, but it was a very good, very good speech. And obviously, the Board of Trustees, Mr. Oliver included, have been busily working down the list of needs for the township. So, Mr. Viviano was able to highlight a lot of those, it's recorded, I'd recommend watching it if you haven't. And just a shout out that it's good to see the township moving in the direction that it is. And I appreciate boring Board of Trustees meetings, as I'm sure Ms. Smith can probably attest.
That's correct.
Yep, that's all I have.
Anyone else? I was here as well, and I enjoyed the camaraderie, so to speak, and meeting some of the movers and shakers in the community, so it was nice. Anyone else?
Sure, I'll further add that I was also present and conversed with Mr. Tuckfield and Mr. Hardy. Ms. Smith, I think she was there too, I'm not sure.
We walked in together.
That's right, we did, I thought so, in that parking lot. Having attended many of those over the years, and in prior professional lives, sponsoring a lot of those, and also presenting such a State of the Township address in the past, I have to say, Mr. Viviano, along with, with, with our clerk and our treasurer, put on quite an entertaining presentation that was anything but boring. It was intended to be, you know, highlight boring, but I would like to see more municipalities do such State of the Townships like that. It made for very engaging and lively presentation, and it certainly kept my attention for that. So, again, I also congratulate the township for, you know, the progress that's been made in, you know, the last year and a half, the improvements that have been made, the hires that have been made internal staff, as well as the fillings out of the various different commissions and boards that I've seen. So, congratulations.
It was also a great way to be transparent to the communities around us, so that was nice. All right, that's it, then we'll move to the Macomb Township Board of Trustees liaison update. Mr. Charles Oliver.
Thank you, Mr. Hardy. I didn't make it to the State of Township, but I heard it was great. And I'm really happy that our planning board was able to attend. And I think that reflects a lot with the board members, they like to see that too, so it's a nice thing. Anyway, on board business, a few things, we've had a couple of meetings before this. One of the things, we fill a vacancy, do I get four minutes, Mr. Hardy?
You can, you can as long as you need, sir.
You've already used it up.
We filled a vacancy in our library board, Lori Shirts. She will be on our, she's our new member. I think she's well qualified, and she's pretty excited to do it. The clerk's office hired a election supervisor, the name of James Allen, and he's gonna be our new election supervisor, so that's a couple of new additions. One of the big things, I think, that I thought was pretty important, that we're pretty close, we think, to getting a grant for a path, sidewalk. The grant could be up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So, they're working pretty hard, the board's working hard, the grant people are working hard. And it looks like we got a solid chance of getting it. I don't wanna zazoo it, but it seems like it's coming that way, hopefully. So, that, that would be great, 'cause then we could tie some areas up here, down here, so. And the other thing is, kinda tied to that, August the second, we're gonna have a millage, or a vote on Park and Rec. And we're gonna go out for a twenty-year millage. And we're actually, from the first twenty-year millage, we've reduced it by a fraction, but it's a reduction. And I think that speaks volumes, because in twenty years, the cost of everything has probably doubled. And, and the Park and Recs was able to manage that, run that facility pretty effectively and efficiently. And now we're going out for another twenty-year bond, and we're actually reducing it, so I think that's pretty good, so.
It's awesome.
And that's, oh, and one other thing. De La Salle was in here probably, I don't, they were in here because they won the state champion football. So, they were recognized. Now they're back to be recognized for basketball.
Awesome.
State champs, so, and there's, there's a lot of students that, from our township, that go to De La Salle. So, the board recognized De La Salle, and I thought that was great too. So, we're hoping for a baseball championship now. So, that's about it.
Okay.
No questions.
And you have some. And you may have one.
Okay.
I was just gonna ask on the grant, what is the priority for the two fifty, if we get it? Which paths are we looking to prioritize, or has that not been set?
We're kinda looking at running down twenty-five mile road, connecting some subs there, running, running down Broughton Road in front, connecting to Town Hall. That's kinda the area that we're looking at, so, hopefully. But again, we gotta get, we gotta get the grants. We don't, we don't have them, but we're working hard on them. Why not, but the grant people are.
All right, he's got one more, Mr. Oliver, so, Mr. Bentley, go ahead.
Have you heard any status on the road extensions from the Department of Roads? You know.
Road extension, what?
Extensions of, like Broughton Road, or any of those others.
Broughton Road will not be extended, I'm sorry, I'm over here, Mr. Bentley. In order for Broughton Road to be extended, there needs to be acquisitions by developers and participation. So, there is no plan right now to extend Broughton Road at all.
Okay, so some of the other major routes?
Well, Garfield is gonna be extended, and that project, our office has been involved in that. They're gonna start on the twenty-four mile intersection, and work between twenty-four and twenty-five. There's still some land that needs to be acquired between twenty-three and twenty-two, as well as twenty-three and twenty-four. But almost all the landowners have donated the right of way, we're waiting for a couple of last pieces. But that will be done, hopefully, within the next two years. That's the big project. So, you're looking at twenty-three mile, obviously, is in project, is in, is in process, and that's running all the way to Romeo Plank. They just did the North Avenue area, that's pretty much set, and that's in progress, and then Garfield, probably the next major one.
All right, thank you very much, I appreciate your.
Then I got a question, is that starting at twenty-two miles to twenty-three first?
Well, no, because we have one more piece we have to, we're working on. But it looks like twenty-four mile intersection where that school is at.
Yeah.
That's gonna be worked on first.
Twenty-four to twenty-five?
Yeah, potentially, they may potentially connect that. I know for sure they're gonna work on the intersection there, and hopefully work on that area, and then they're gonna, we'll figure out what the other priorities. We wanna get twenty-two to twenty-three done for sure.
Right.
All right.
All right. What about the twenty-five mile road bridge? What's the status, anything?
I thought I saw that, there was an article, Jim knows better than me, there was an article that it's going to get fixed, right?
Yeah, they, they received.
We've got some money for that.
They received some federal dollars, I think that's a couple of years out.
For the Critical Bridge Program to the state, wasn't it, they just announced it, right?
Yeah, it's actually in the, the, the second phase of the money that they've been allocating for bridges. So the first phase will actually have the twenty-six mile bridge, uh, fixed, uh, between, I think it's, um, um, Broughton and Card. And then they'll come back with the next phase for that bridge just, um, east of Foss.
Cool, good, great, okay. Anyone else?
Thank you.
All right, ZBA, Mr. Tuckfield?
Mr. Chairman, the only thing I'd have to report is, I believe our next meeting has been canceled, so we are not due for one until July.
Boring is good.
Boring's good.
Okay. Planning Department items?
Uh, nothing to report this evening.
Nothing at all?
Boring's good.
All right, motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Spatafora, supported by Mr. Tuckfield, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn at eight fifty, eight forty?
I was going to abstain.
Okay. All those in favor again, aye. Anyone opposed? Turn the lights on.